That the I'll call the special meeting workshop, January twenty four, two thousand twenty three to order. And with that, I'd ask Stephanie, if you would please call the role.
Thank you. Frank Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Marine.
Yeah.
May Hates.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
Tom Smart.
Here.
And Stoker.
Here.
And Councilmember Feta will be running a little late. I will note when he arrives.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Much appreciated. Counsel, as we had discussed after going through the twenty-three, twenty-four Bino budget. Uh, there was some shortfall. We needed some uh revenue funding for different things such as streets, parks, uh, things in those natures. And I told you that we would put together a workshop that would focus on different uh revenue opportunities. So I have past staff to go through that process with a variety of of opportunities for the city council to come up with revenue streams to support said projects, not just basic general fund. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Erin Glenn, Finance Director. She worked with all the rest of the staff members to put this presentation together. And I think I thank both Eric Roscoe Chief, as well as Erin and the team that put this together. We reviewed it today and had a discussion on it. I believe it's very well presented. We're gonna be at a six thousand foot level tonight. Uh, we're not necessarily gonna get into deep weeds in regards to things. But what we'd like to find out from council, a consensus of any particular one of these items that you'd like us to take a look at a little bit more in depth and work it through the the finance subcommittee and bring back to council for further discussion. So with that, Erin, if you would please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, in front of you is a printout of tonight's slides, uh, so you can easily follow along and make notes as we go. Um, so this evening, we're looking at some revenue sources for the city to potentially help some of our budget shortfalls we've had. So on the next. Um, we just began working in our newly adopted twenty-three, twenty-four Bino budget. But in the process of creating that twenty-three, twenty-four budget, it became clear that we did not have enough revenue uh to support all budget requests. Uh, the two biggest areas of deficit are in the general fund and the street funds, both one-on-one operations and three-on-two with preservation. For the general fund, uh, more than four million dollars was cut from the department requested budget, which uh includes cuts in all departments, uh, IT, HR, finance, parks, police, and so on. Um, the street fund one-on-one had more than seven hundred thousand cut, but it also took um five hundred and ninety thousand transfer from the general fund to balance it and get it um to where it is today. Um, in Fund three-on-two, there's a few million dollars in deferred maintenance that was not included in the requested budget. Uh, but Roscoe can speak uh to the specifics of that. And so this is why we're having this discussion tonight. Uh, the goal tonight, as the mayor stated, is not to find a solution, uh, but find out what, as a council member, uh, would you want staff to spend more time on and what you may be willing to support? Myself, Eric, and Roscoe have done a little bit of research on some revenue sources that could help in the areas the city has the shortfalls, which include in the general fund, uh, parks, public safety, IT, HR, and community development. And in the streets, both operations and maintenance, as well as preservation. Uh, the information we're presenting to you tonight is not a super in-depth look, uh, but is meant to give you a general idea of what each of these takes. Uh, the sources we're gonna discuss are property tax, utility taxes, cannabis, gambling tax, transportation benefit district, and a metropolitan park district. I'll go ahead and start with the property tax. Uh, to increase our property tax revenue, the city would need to do a levy lid lift. State law only allows the city to increase revenues by one percent year over year from the prior year's tax collection. So that's one percent revenue increase. Uh, levied lid lift is a process that allows the city to increase the limit above that one percent. Um, there are two basic options. Uh, when doing this, you can do a single year or a multi-year. And each one of these, you can have a temporary or a permanent. Usually a temporary would be used if you were just wanting to fund a certain project and had needed one shot of money. Uh, most are permanent levy lid lifts where you basically reset um the amount, and then it's one percent every year after that. Um, that's exactly what the city did in twenty seventeen with specific to the library. So we reset the limit and then it continued at that limit and a portion of our tax goes to library. And then the rest is to generate that. The city cannot use a levy lid lift if the city is already at the statutory maximum rate. Uh, West Richland's maximum rate is two dollars and ten cents. And West Richland is below the maximum rate. And for twenty twenty-three, the levy rate is estimated to be a dollar thirty-three. Uh, twenty-two, it was a dollar forty-two. So they haven't finalized the number for twenty twenty-three yet, so I can't give you the exact number. Uh, revenues collected can either be unrestricted, meaning used for any governmental purpose, or restricted for a specific purpose. For example, when we did the library, that was for a specific purpose and therefore became restricted. And a levy lid lift does require voter approval. This next slide is the one I used uh when we did the ad valorem tax back in November. Um, it shows you um, the estimated rate. I have that red circle down below. That's where that dollar thirty-three is. Um, the number below it, that remaining statutory limit, that is the what we are leaving on the table or what that difference is. So it's about seventy-six point eight percent, seventy-six point eight cents difference between that two-ten and that dollar thirty-three. And if you took um the property tax, it would come out to about one point six million a year. And so that's all I have on property tax. And so next is for utility taxes. Um, a city may impose a tax on income from utility companies, and this includes the city-owned uh utilities. Revenues are unrestricted and may be used for any general government purpose. For electric, gas, telephone, uh, maximum tax rate is six percent, uh, which our city does impose. Um, to go above that six percent, it requires voter approval. Uh, currently, there is no limitation on water, sewer, solid waste, or stormwater. Uh, the city currently collects thirteen and a half percent from both water and sewer. Twelve and a half percent goes to general fund and one percent goes to the street fund. Uh, stormwater is at six percent, all going to the general fund. Solid waste is eight and a half percent, all going to the general fund. Uh, changing these rates would affect our utility rate models. Uh, internet and satellite TV are not taxable. And cable TV is taxable, and this city does currently tax that at six percent. So next, uh, Eric is gonna go ahead and talk about the next two sources of cannabis and the gambling tax.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, so the other, another revenue source could be through cannabis retail sales tax and excise tax. Uh, cannabis is currently not allowed in any of the zones as allowed retail use um in the city. And so it would require a zoning code text amendment to allow for that use to be um in in the city and any, any of the zones. Um, and we currently have an application then by a private individual to to make that zoning code text amendment. Um, and so through that, uh, the, there's two taxes, the excise tax is a state shared tax that would come in, that taxes shared throughout all of the jurisdictions that allow for uh cannabis retail sales. And so the state gets that revenue in and then they split it out proportionately throughout all of the cities and counties that uh that have those allowances within their jurisdictions. Uh, they, it is restricted to fund law enforcement resources. Uh, so it's not just a free-for-all. It is specific for use. And we've estimated that revenue to be approximately fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, next slide. Retail sales tax. Um, this is just a straight-up tax that the city receives, which is point eight-four percent of the revenue collected. Um, and this is an unrestricted fund, so this would go directly to the general fund to fund um those things that the city's needs may be. And uh based on a cannabis store that has receipts of twenty-four million dollars a year, we anticipate that this would, the city would receive a hundred and seventy-five um thousand dollars a year from that, which would total two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually um between the excise tax and the retail sales tax. The next um option or another option is gambling tax. This one would also require a zoning code text amendment. Uh, this is not allowed to use. Casinos are not allowed in the city currently to to do that. Uh, we do not have any interest at this time for a casino. No one's approached the city to open one. Um, and so uh, just some basic facts there. Uh, the revenue is also restricted, must be used for public safety. Uh, from the current pull tabs that we have from different um locations in the city, we are generating ten to eighteen thousand dollars a year off of those pull tabs.
All right, we'll get into transportation benefit district. Um, we'll kind of give you an overview that you can form a transportation benefit district that gives you the chapter in the RCW. Um, and this is to raise revenue for specific transportation projects. Um, which are usually through, there's several different methods, but the most common is uh vehicle license fees or car tabs. Or the other ones is sales tax. Um, with a transportation benefit district, um, they're used for transportation improvements. The RCW that's listed lists several there. Um, we have to be careful because we also have transportation impact fees. So if you were looking at setting up a transportation benefit district, you wouldn't want to include uh capital projects. Otherwise, you'd have to issue refunds. You can't double that. Um, so what we'd be looking at is uh street operation and maintenance and preservation, which aren't part of our uh, transportation impact fee that we do charge. Well, next slide. Uh, formation. Uh, basically, the requirement is is to hold a public hearing. And if the you find that the action is in the public's interest, you can form a transportation benefit district by ordinance. Uh, you just need to specify the boundary, which the majority are the actual city limits of the agency or county. Um, and must include the improvements which would be funded. In this case, again, um, once it's established, you couldn't change the use of the funds or the boundaries without going back and holding another public hearing and taking input. Um, governance, when you do a transportation benefit district, you're creating a separate entity, but there is a way that you can, as a city, can take over. Uh, uh, as a legislative body, you can uh take over that and not act as a separate, which eighty-five percent of the cities in town have established TBDs that assume the powers of that. Otherwise, it's a separate entity, separate budget, separate reporting. Um, this way, basically, the council will be sitting on that board. It's still, the funds would be tracked separately. They're still at no reporting. But again, it's, I think it has to do with efficiency, and you can see the note at the bottom that it's a a process that the majority of these that have transportation benefit districts have done. And that's next slide. As far as funding, um, you know, there were some recent changes in the legislation dealing with it. Um, and this has to do with outgoing to the vote of the people or councilmatic authority. You can uh pass a a car tab uh twenty dollars. Uh, you can actually go all the way up to fifty dollars. But you gotta be at twenty dollars for two years. And then you can go up to forty dollars. And once you've been at forty dollars for two years, you can go up to fifty. Just realize um anything over fifty takes a vote of the people and that um there's a um, anything over forty is subject to a referendum. So uh, just to give you an idea, uh, there's about current, I think, I counted fifty-five or fifty-six cities in the state of Washington have transportation benefit districts with vehicle license fees at the car tabs. Uh, I counted twelve of those are in, I'd call southeast in Washington. Um, and they all are twenty dollars currently, with the exception of Prosser that's a twenty-five. And so some of those towns are up the valley, but you've got Richland, Prosser, Grandview, Topin, and Shakama, Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, Mapten, and there's there's smaller towns around. Um, and then the only one that's actually, only city that's got a voter-approved uh vehicle license fee is the city of Seattle. That's sixty dollars. That was approved in twenty fourteen. It actually failed in twenty eleven, but uh rejected by the voters. But they're the only ones that successfully passed that. Um, some, we may get questions. I nine seventy-six was initiative that would have uh eliminated the ability to impose a transportation benefit uh district license fee. Um, that was in uh twenty nineteen, but the state's Supreme Court ruled the initial was unconstitutional in twenty twenty. So uh, next slide. The other side of it is sales tax, and there was some recent change in twenty twenty-two with some legislation. It used to be only only do uh two-tenths uh sales tax. Um, and that has changed now, so council can do up to uh a tenth of a percent. The other two-tenths would have to be voter-approved. And again, these things are set for a ten-year timeframe, and then you'd have to either renew or take it back out to the voters at that time. Next slide. So it gave you some estimates using the vehicle license fees, didn't do sales tax because as a council mayor, you realize that the city doesn't have a lot of retail sales tax coming in, or we wouldn't probably have any of these discussions. Uh, but looking at uh the finance department had some numbers that they got through the Department of Licensing back in twenty twenty-one. And it talks about automobiles, trucks, and motorcycles. So there is a list in the RCWs of what things this would be subject to and which things are exempt. I didn't include it, but if you're interested in that, I can provide that to council. But basically, it gives you the dollar amounts that the city would have collected on an annual basis in twenty twenty-one minus the one percent admin fee that the city would take. So it gives you the idea uh with this. Um, one thing to note is the timeframe is the fees aren't effective until six months after the ordinance is adopted. So say you did pass towards form the transportation benefit district to charge a uh vehicle license fee, January first, it wouldn't be effective July first. So anybody renewing their uh car tabs at that point would start paying the new fee, and there's usually about a two-month lag before the city would start seeing that revenue on a monthly basis going forward. So that kind of gives you the timeframe. The other thing to put in perspective, when you see those dollar amounts on an annual basis, I, Erin kind of touched about it earlier, the street fund in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, just for basic operation maintenance, which is paying for the streetlights, snowplow, patching potholes. Um, in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, the general fund, they had a transfer five hundred and forty thousand dollars just to balance the street fund. This budget cycle was five hundred and ninety thousand dollars to balance it after we cut seven hundred thousand out of the request. Um, and then the pavement preservation portion. Uh, when we last took a look at that, we had four to five million dollars of deferred maintenance and pavement preservation. And at that time, it was growing about sixty, eight hundred thousand dollars a year in deferred maintenance. So this could help, but it doesn't patch both of the issues that we're seeing. I think that
Now, I have the last one, and that is um a metropolitan park district. Um, but there is the RCW that authorizes cities um to form the district. Um, let's see, to form this type of district, um, a simple majority voter approval is uh required. And the governance of the district is very similar to what Roscoe just talked about um with the TBD. Um, if a park district has the same boundaries as a city, the city council may be designated to act as a legislative body. So in the next slide, uh, funding for the Metropolitan Park District comes from property tax. Uh, the district would be a junior taxing district with a maximum levy of seventy, seventy-five cents per thousand assessed valuation. The initial levy limit would be set at the initial ballot measure and then have the same one percent cap revenue uh collection year over year as the city's regular levy. Uh, more, more research is needed, but I believe this would affect the capacity, the city, uh, and and their regular uh levy li- limit. So because you have, I think there's four different limits out there. We have the three dollar and sixty cents, um, which I know includes us and the fire district. And then there's a five dollar and ninety cent uh limit out there, and I can't remember everything that is within that. And then there's another ten dollar limit. So it's all in an order, and it it would be some research to figure exactly where that Metropolitan Park District's um, lies. Um, and this uh last slide here shows the potential annual revenue from the district. Uh, again, just over one point six million if it went for the full seventy-five cents uh using the twenty-twenty-three's assessed value. Uh, in this case, an owner of a house uh with assessed value of four hundred thousand, it would pay approximately three hundred dollars a year to the park. Um, and then it could be used for, I think, parkland acquisition, maintenance, operations of your parks. Um, these last two slides are the resources um we all used for the information to put together for you this evening. Um, there are a lot more details if you'd like to look further. Um, I'll also send you an email so you can have a link to the sources um on your computer, so you can just direct link. And again, uh, just to emphasize that we're not trying to have the final answer tonight, but rather find out what each of you may be open to. Uh, and staff will delve a little deeper into whichever topic uh would like reviewed in detail with the finance committee. Are there any questions?
Well, yeah, with that, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and throw out questions that council members may have. These six different options has been laid out this evening. Uh, that necessarily need to be in any particular order or conversations amongst yourselves. So I see Councilman Smart's got his card up first. We'll go with Councilman Smart.
Uh, yes, thank you, council and staff. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, Roscoe, for, I just want to start questions with the actual presentations first, before we get into, before I get into opinions. Um, on the transportation benefit district, um, let's see, one of the options showed a ten-year limit. Is there a, is there a time period that we would set if there was a a tab tax, for example? Um, or is there a limit to that for time?
I didn't see it on MRC, but that would be further. The the sales tax had a ten-year, so it it very well could have a ten-year sunset on that.
Or 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 we could set it to anything under that.
That's correct. A little more research to verify that.
And and the concept there is just as a temporary stopgap measure, perhaps, before we end up with actual sales tax when we when we double our population to thirty thousand people or something, right? So, thanks.
On the gambling tax, um, as I understand it, meantime, we try to uh possibly talk Ms. Markham into doing a card room because card rooms would be allowed as a sub, sub secondary use of the business. Um, if card rooms were to come about, would it be the same uh restriction as far as public safety tax?
I believe so, yes. When you look at the gambling taxes and what's being collected, they all have that same restriction as far as it has to go towards public safety. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. Uh, I just first wanted to follow up on something that I think I heard Erin saying. I just wanted to make sure for the Metropolitan Park District, you said that that would be separate from a regular levy that the city might do, correct? So the limit that's on the city would be totally separate from this.
It is, but it could have an effect on the city's maximum rate. So you have different juris- uh jurisdictions or taxing jurisdictions. Um, like I know we share one with Benton County. So our levy is three sixty, but because we share it with the fire district, there, they get a dollar fifty of it. And then so that's where our two dollar and ten cent comes from. It's very similar to if you were to have like a library district, a park district, and any of these junior taxing districts within your city boundaries, it has a potential to lower that because then there's a couple more limits. Um, and I think there's a limit of five ninety and ten dollars. And I need to see, I can't remember exactly what falls under each of those uh limits, but it is there.
Thank you. And then the other question I had was regarding the gambling tax. Um, I just want to make sure. So we don't have any interest in this, but and so this isn't something that like Ties does or anything. They don't have pull tabs, but they do. Okay, so this would be something that we would putting on to what they already would pay in regards to, I guess, sales tax?
Oh, for instance, Ty's Tavern has pull tabs. So if you go down there and use this pull tabs, there's a tax that would be collected on that and you'd get the revenue from that. Those are existing users, existing uses. So um, any newer uses, any new uses that come in would be subject to the existing zoning codes. We'd need to change the zoning code and allow for those uses a little more liberally throughout the city.
But what Eric was meaning when he said uh no interest at this time, he was meaning we have no public interest that somebody's come forward and asked for the, 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 this particular
For the change in the order, right, for the text.
I didn't know if he misunderstood that.
No, 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 I
We didn't, we had no interest, no, we had no interest in people at this time, yeah.
Right, okay. So then this would not go on anyone that currently has any of these activities happening, or it would?
Well, it's currently being applied to those that currently haven't, right? So the tax still applies even though it's a legally non-conforming use. It's just that any new uses, uh, so if Michelle Markham wanted to do a card room, for instance, she'd have to come in and apply for a zoning code text amendment to allow for that to be in her zone. Because currently, we do not allow for those uses in in the city.
Before this was enacted a number of years ago, as far as the restriction, there was already uh pull tabs and clutch boards and things like that and and habits. So once this was passed, they were still grandfathered in as a non-conforming use, but no new stuff.
Okay. Yes. So then are we currently collecting a gambling tax from the ones that are in use? Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, um, I I just wanted to ask about the first bullet on the first page. Uh, you say there's a four million dollar cut or difference between what was requested and what was finalized. Um, do we have numbers for what that's been in the past years? Because I wasn't involved in the previous one. I was in the two before that, but my memory doesn't go back that far to know if it was ever discussed, what those differences were.
I would have to look at those numbers. I think it's been growing every year. Um, uh, specifically parks and um IT was a big one this year. Um, and then police, I mean, they're always needing more uh items to keep up with the legislation.
Sure, I just, it would help put it more in perspective if I had previous years to go against. How bad that's getting.
A couple of them I remember that I've been involved with as such the mayor, it started out like a thousand or a million dollars short, and then a million and a half, and then two. So it has progressively been growing. And I don't recall if you ever get a three or if we went right from two. Um, I don't recall if you ever get a three or if we went right from two to four.
Well, and then this one, um, I think five is actually ended up being the closer number. I know it was close to four, but then when we had to take an additional five hundred and ninety out to funnel it to the street fund. So I think in the end it ended up being um about uh closer to five million.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I think it just paints a better picture when you have the ability, citizens is to, hey, this is what's happening. Uh, and we need to help them understand driving a little bit, so I, I would just like that picture.
I think, yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can find. And I think one of the big things to understand, and I kind of talked about this when we were preparing the budget. Is um, our city is heavy reliance on property tax. It's about a. They've come pretty close to equal as far as property tax, sales tax, and utility taxes of like equally proportioned funding like. The general fund, but that property tax limit of one percent, so it's not. It's a one percent increase on your revenue. So it's like if we collect a hundred thousand dollars this year. Next year, we can only collect a hundred and one thousand dollars. It does not me- matter how much the valuation has gone up. So I think that has hindered us, uh, especially in this budget cycle with inflation. Like we're seeing fuel, uh, I know our budget for fuel was through the roof. I know they're out trying to buy vehicles now for like police and parks. That the estimates we got even a year ago, they're coming back through the roof. So I think that that is actually one of our biggest things is property tax does not keep up with inflation.
Councilmember Blue?
On the transportation benefit district, um, that would also include snow removal type of, that's under maintenance type of.
Yeah, that would fall under the operation of maintenance, that's correct.
So you get another, you get another dump truck.
Another D O T surplus truck, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Um, I guess the, the concern I would have with the sales tax approach to it is whether conflicts in any way with. The V F T uh, uh, transportation tax point two. Cent, I, I'm not sure what part of the code it comes from, but that would be my.
Yeah, I, we have to dig deeper, but I think there, it's a separate, separate thing. This would be specific. Like I said, just when you're looking at, it, you, you charge a park impact fee, so you gotta make sure those projects. Are not included in what you form for transportation. Same thing with parks. If you look at a park metropolitan district, we have park impact fees. So you can't double dip with those. So if you're gonna use the Metropolitan Park District, we need to take a hard look at those impact fees and make sure that they were kept. Separate.
Who was up next? I think Councilmember Moran.
I'll be the one to broach it. Um, in opening a can of worms, I'm wondering about the cannabis. So we currently have one, I'm wondering of what we currently have. No, 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 I'm, you were saying that we have one application requesting the text amendment. Sorry.
Sorry, I forgot to mention, we don't have one in town. We do have a text.
No, 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 but what I'm wondering is if we were to have this text amendment based off of current. Restrictions as to where there cannot be, from what I understood, there are very few, if any, places within the city. They could have a retail cannabis store, is that correct?
I, I've looked at it and there's several different locations that it could go. Um, they, they've applied for the zoning code text amendment. I haven't. Gone through it fully yet and vetted it before I bring it to council and, and the planning commission and take out to the public, so it's still in staff review. Uh, but you know, it is, there, there are locations within the city that it could go and, and work well, I think. Um, you know, we've got the one in the county that's in the ci- city, but in the county. Um, and so there's, there's that and, and so we're just looking at that going, well, okay, what's the impact and how can we? Analyze that as we bring that to you.
Care with the council, the, the, the resolution that Pasco just passed. And, and particular location that they cited in that resolution of asking council, asking staff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so yeah, I met with, uh, Rick White. He's the community development director for the city of Pasco yesterday. Um, and their council passed a four-three vote, a resolution to direct staff. To allow marijuana retail sales in their industrial zones. Um, and have it allowed as a conditional use permit. With specific restrictions associated with it, that they're gonna develop those restrictions. Wasn't very. He didn't go into detail as far as what those restrictions might be at this point, because they haven't even started drafting what it's gonna look like yet, right? And they're kind of in the same boat we are, just very beginning process of it. Um, so. Um, if we were to do that, we'd definitely be going out to the public, getting a lot of public involvement and feedback and go through that process before we bring that to council.
Thank you. And from what I understand, it was actually the more restrictive of the two that was passed. There was a less restrictive one, but that one did not pass.
He didn't go into details of that. I know that they were looking at doing, allowing it in their downtown districts. Um, and that did not go through, he said, so that was not something that received support from council. In the industrial park, it was, they did receive four votes.
Right, so what I'm wondering is, if we were to have, if we were to have this text amendment. Is there some way that we could also use some sort of incentives? To possibly work with Nirvana to see if they would be willing to be. Annexed into the city so that we could start using something like this. So we. Considered something, or is that something that we might look into as well as this?
That has been a topic of discussion too, that we've looked at, uh, in, in consultation with our city attorney on that, because there are some ramifications.
Gotcha. I just figure since, you know, it's, it's already there, um, it's not going to be going away, so might as well see if we would be able to. Help benefit the city and if we could. I don't know, somehow sweeten the pot to make it to where they would want to join the city and be annexed since they are the deciding. Factor whether or not they would be annexed.
Actually, council could annex the means out of the petition, but it's not advised at this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yes, so I just wanted to, um. Make sure that we understand and that I understand and our, our citizens understand the overarching. Um, concept here behind this uh discussion. So, you know, every year or every two years, I guess, we either come up with a new budget or, or amend the current budget. And the city has needs to operate to provide a level of service to our citizens. We have parks, we have streets, we have snowplows, we have sewer, et cetera. And every year, uh, staff does a really excellent job of listing their needs. Uh, maybe every two years, I might have that wrong. I don't think they do that every year, every two years or every three months, um, sometimes it seems, but.
Your budget when you start a year early.
Right, and so, and, and we all appreciate that, and that's how the city runs as efficiently as it does. And um, in that process, the council and staff, uh, you know, work out. Um, the budget and we obtain an acceptable level of service. Which I'm pretty sure most people in West Richland appreciate. And I, I don't really hear overwhelming complaints about, you know, one thing or the other. We have fairly well-maintained roads to date. And I don't hear the kind of complaints that I, that I heard from my in-laws in Spokane for decades, you know, with the pot holes everywhere. Um, we're really blessed that we've maintained a good uh standard of, of city operation. We have a great. Uh, police force, um, et cetera, nice parks, uh, et cetera, so. What happened this year is that, um, that same process occurred. There was a request from department heads for. A lot of things, many are needs, some of them are wants. Uh, they probably argue that. I'm sure they're all needs in somebody's mind. Um, and that you, 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 uh, cut back to where we could balance the budget. And maintain an agreeable level of service. What we're seeing here tonight is, is kind of, if I, if I got my, my story straight. Is the four million dollars, uh, kind of deficit in our funding that we would need in order to get. More of the wants, as well as maybe a couple extra of the needs that we had to cut out. In order to maybe increase level of service on overall outlook for our citizens. So I just wanna, I wanna clarify that if we come up with no additional revenue streams. That we are not going in debt, per se. We may have deferred maintenance on parks that won't be covered this year and next year for the foreseeable future. We may not be able to afford, you know, the entire fleet of snazzy cop cars. You know, we might have to cut back somewhere. Uh, there might be, um, a street that doesn't get resurfaced. Uh, there might be a park that we decide not to build. Um, but nevertheless, we have a budget that's balanced. And this is, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, is about how we can. Increase revenue to get more of those things that are not already included in the budget. Is that?
I have.
That's, that's not.
That's not, so, I, I'd love to hear Aaron's explanation, cause I needed.
I'm gonna allow staff to individually talk to that specific question.
Thank you, that's.
So, I, I don't do this workshop as, um, working with the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Whatever comes out of tonight is not going to affect what our current budget is. I think this is, um, kind of what we saw in going through the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and it kind of goes back to what Ken was asking. As far as, um, we were a million off, or two million off, or three million off, so maybe seeing that escalation. But this year seemed a little bit higher than normal. Um, inflation is way higher than normal that we've ever met. And so I would say this is kind of preemptive, and we're trying to gear toward the next biennium at this point. So in my opinion, we're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, um, solutions today. So this is not gonna fix anything in the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Hey, uh, Eric, I'll be, I'll, I'll throw it at you, and then I'll go to Roscoe, and then Chief, if you have anything else to add? Because the conversations we've had in senior staff are a little bit more broad than what you're hearing this evening, so I'd like the staff to. Tell, Paul Harvey.
So, yeah, I think Mayor, um, so through this last budget process, you know, we were asked to throw in all the things that we needed in our department. I went through, um, looked at what the S F As were, the council set some of the goals and, and desires. The council wanted my department to work on. One of those, for instance, was updating the downtown plan. And going through and, you know, analyzing what that is and what it needed to be. And that was in the budget request. Um, it's a need for the city, I believe, something that we really desperately need to address and, and make sure that we're effectively. Supporting economic development in our city. And that item could not be funded under the budget that was passed. And I had s- uh, staff needs, I have staff needs, um, you know, we're. Trying to keep up with your parking lot list that you generate, um, from your meetings. And trying to address some of the zoning code text amendments that we believe would be, uh, helpful to. Generate economic development in the city and help promote growth and, and help developers so that they don't have. Some of the obstacles that have been put in place over the years with our antiquated code that we have. And so we're trying to work on these things, but I don't have the bodies to do it. And so when I come to council or when I came to the senior staff meeting and met with the mayor and we're looking at what revenues we have. My department, everything I asked for was not granted. And then things that were funded last budget cycle were taken off, because we needed to balance the budget. And so it weren't, these are not wants, these are things that you want and want to have done. More so than what I want to have done, and it's being pulled off of it because we don't have the funds to do it.
That's where the difficult decision lies within this body, so. Roscoe, go ahead. Yeah, no, you can, yeah, it's un, it's unplugged.
Start the clock, start the clock.
And he has the heaviest burden with, with public work.
So, little different when, most of my department is tied up with utilities, and so those are set by rates and to, to fund the utilities, so. The things that public work touch that are an issue, we'll start with parks. We just went through updating the park plan. We spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars on a study to do park maintenance and what the needs are. So, um, you set, you passed a resolution that said. We can only, I mean, we're at basic level. We went through and said, we're gonna do basic level of service at all our parks. We need seven bodies, we need all this equipment, and we got three point two million dollars of deferred maintenance on our parks. And what was passed in the budget was two hundred thousand dollars towards deferred maintenance in one body. But we didn't change the level of service on the maintenance. So what should happen is that maintenance, the level of service you adopted for parks should come back to and say. Which, which parks are we not servicing? Which ones are we closing? Because adopting a level of service and then not funding it, you need to change your level of service, and no one wants to have those hard discussions. What do we close? What are we not doing? Instead, staff's trying to do more with less, but at some point, you're gonna get less with less. It just, it's, I don't know. Um, so that's parks, that's a good recent one. The other one is streets. Uh, it's twenty-three years of pavement preservation, and, uh, no one wants to touch it because everybody says the roads are good. Which they are, cause they're all new, they're all built the same time, they're all gonna fail at the same time. So for every dollar preservation you spend now, you save four dollars in new, in reconstructing it, so. Um, it seems like every three to four years, I spin up the pavement preservation plan to bring to the subcommittee. And the mayor, and it's got a huge multimillion dollar, uh, deferred maintenance. Um, growing by several hundred thousand a year. And give you options to fill that gap and. No one wants, car tabs are not popular, and he's just, you know, and, and going to sales tax. I wish we were a city that had an auto flex in the mall. Cause then you can do sales tax, and everybody that comes to your city pays for your pavement preservation in roads. Instead, we're looking at raising car tabs here. And when we shop it over in Richland, we're paying for their parks and police, you know, not our own. So it's a tough, if it's a tough sell, but if you don't take care of the preservation. Of this thing, I mean, the streets are your largest asset in the city, and if you don't take care of it, you know, you're, you're at rebuilding and. Uh, you can drive around, I, I, I said this to previous councils, I won't spend a dollar on any local roadway. Because we don't have enough to fund our arterial roadways. So you can go back and look. The last time we've done a preservation project on a local roadway, I, I'd have to dig back pretty far. Um, we've been lucky getting state and federal grants that we can on the arterial roads, but you can't get those for local. Um, and so we're gonna have some hard decisions at the utility committee, cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna spin up that effort again this year. Um, look at, you know, I think right now we try to keep, maintain the same level of service for all our roads. You know, we're gonna have to have the hard choices, just like our parks, our, our level of service may be a heck of a lot lower on a local road than it is on a. Keem road or a bombing range. Those are hard decisions, and, I mean, we've already changed the roadway section so they last longer. Looking at narrow lanes, so I don't have as much asphalt to maintain. So we've already done the easy stuff, now it's, it's, it's tough stuff. But those are my two big ones, the streets and parks, and really coming to grip on what you say and what you find match, and right now we're not doing that.
Since, uh, Councilman Smart spurred the question, I'll let him follow up with, uh, the further question for comment, and then we'll move to the chief.
Perfect, you, um, actually, I'd like the chief to.
All right, very good.
Okay, so I guess the first thing I'll bring up is my, the personnel request. You know, as, um, as we have increased the population, obviously, we're gonna, we need more officers. It would be great if I had twenty-two commissioned officers right now doing their job a hundred percent. You, you guys know the hurdle that we have and stuff, so. Um, I didn't get all the police officers I requested either, even though the population is growing, and by the way. Crime has increased in different areas and stuff, and we're trying to combat that as a team the best we can with what we've got. And unfortunately, I think it's the same concept I think Roscoe kind of alluded to, that eventually the services will start to drop, cause I don't have. There's more going on, I have less people to take care of it. The, one of the big ones for me this year, if you're talking about the cuts. Was even the part-time animal control, code enforcement officer that I was asking for. Some of the neighborhoods in the city, um, need a little bit of that attention from code enforcements to get some compliance going on, not necessarily enforcement, but we start with compliance. Some of the neighborhoods in the city um, need a little bit of that attention from code enforcements to get some compliance going on, not necessarily enforcement, but we start with compliance. And we still have to do that with the personnel that we have, I was not given the part-time person I was asking for, I minimize it, so then we go to equipment. Every officer, especially with the legislation that's happened the last couple of years, we putting, we're putting cameras on them now and putting them in patrol cars and all that stuff. Those fancy cars get them to their calls for when nine-one-one is called, and I have to maintain them being a newer vehicle. The lifespan of those cars with the way we drive them is about five years truly. We've stretched them to seven, eight, and I think you, we probably saw nine this year, that Aaron was helping with my screening, and the bills are going up to keep them on the road. They get parked more often in the parking lot because they're not running all the time, and as soon as I do, I have to rotate them into a different car, I'm talking about the officers, to get them to these shops, so in order to maintain this level of service, these are not wants, or these not, these are not uh, wants, the things I'm talking about, they're needs. And if I have to meet state requirements for cameras and all this stuff that costs us money, that's just hurting that, in that area of the budget, so those are the things I'd bring up tonight, there are obviously more details in this stuff, but those are the big ones for me to talk about.
With our, with our population and, and the, and the average officer per population, we are below.
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor, I forgot, I was gonna bring that up, so you guys, obviously, from my report this year, know that Washington State's the lowest in the nation at one point three eight, West Richland's below that, where I think at one point two, I think it was four in my presentation, if I remember correctly. And so you can only, in my opinion, as the, as a police officer who's been working here for over twenty-five years, you can only do this for so long, and eventually, it's gonna catch up to us. So thank God, we have a great relationship with the community, they help us out solving crime all the time, and we gotta maintain that, but it's becoming an uphill battle more so than ever before.
I think that's across the board with, with the staff, is they, they've done so much with so little, and it's finally getting to an overwhelming point. That as, you know, I'm on my third term now, and only one levee lived left for library, and I believe this is the first time that we've ever really sat down with council and, and given a real hard look of what funding options are available, and council is either gonna have to make the difficult decision, whether it's popular with the citizenry or not, of funding source options, or you're gonna have to reduce level of service and things are not gonna be as pretty as you think they are right now.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the conversation, and this is why I brought it up, um. You know, we've, we've got a, like my, I think it was my uh, uncle long, long ago, would say that we're, we're living on a champagne taste on a beer budget. Um, you know, we've only got seventeen thousand some odd people here in West Richland, and we're trying to look like uh, cities around us that have uh, you know, sixty, eighty, a hundred thousand people. Um, and, and numerous more rooftops and businesses than we have. And the fact of the matter is, you, you know, we're, we're seeing that in this discussion, you can't do that, right? And we, we don't have the sales tax, we're not gonna have the level of service that you're gonna find in Kennewick, I hate to say it, it's just, it's an, it's a mathematical impossibility ultimately. We're kind of, you know, we've got all this deferred maintenance, we're talking this year about uh, three million dollars or something on that order of deferred park maintenance, uh, umpteen million dollars in deferred road maintenance. Um, we wanna, there's been a proposal for an approximate, you know, two million dollar uh, park maintenance facility and a, and a request originally for like eleven staff, uh, you know, to keep our, our park lawn trimmed. Uh, guys, gals, we can't afford those things. So I'm, I'm talking to council now, you know, council, you, I, I agree with what the mayor said, but you have to realize that if you look at these taxes, you only give everybody a, a twenty or fifty dollar car tax tab, or, or a three hundred dollar a year park uh, fee that's processed on their property. Um, these people that live in our community, they're also suffering from inflation, right? They don't, they don't have that extra money just laying around necessarily, I mean, don't probably necessarily wanna spend it on parks, frankly, I mean, everybody loves our parks. Uh, I, I, I love the parks too, but there's gotta be a way to, we should be focusing on how to cut costs as well as maybe trying to come up with supplemental funding if absolutely necessary, but, but we've got a spending problem for a city of seventeen thousand people. We have a spending problem. We're, we're, we're spending more than we can afford, and we're giving ourselves liabilities that we can't afford, every time we invite a new development to come in, we've got that, that well, we've got those roads, et cetera, with no sales tax to help support them. And I realize it's catch twenty-two, we need the population to get the businesses to create the tax. But we need to do some creative thinking here. I challenge us and myself to come up with some creative ways as to how to uh, eliminate some of these future liabilities when we invite a new neighborhood in, you know, I mentioned this to Roscoe, and I don't know if there's a way to do it. But let's make them pay for their own road maintenance, I mean, we've got a community that has, is benefiting from initial expenditure from their, uh, the, the developer and the uh, and, and the initial production of these roads. And then we take on this uh, this liability in perpetuity to maintain without sufficient funds to do so. So I, I, I wanna just mention that, I wanna bring up the nastiest of all topics, which is we need to stop spending money. Uh, as well as maybe look at additional ways to raise funds, but really, you know, you've got like ten or more million dollars in deferred costs coming up, or that are already here. And we have that, none of these solutions that you proposed are coming close to touching. So uh, we've got a spending problem, not a, not a taxing problem. So let's, let's chew on that for a while too, so I'll let other members talk.
Since I don't have a vote, I will, I will, I will disagree personally in regards to the spending problem. Uh, as our community grows, uh, people come in and they build, they build suburbs, they build houses. Uh, we have to provide the infrastructure, I mean, we can't say no. Uh, so, and, and if we, we don't have the money, we are not spending it. Uh, you know, what, what we're, what we're having is growing pains. And what we haven't done, what we haven't done is, is keep up with the revenue options to offset the growing pains while we still wait for that for that economic development boom, where we get the retail sales tax, so on and so forth. Uh, you know, I understand your theory of thought, but I, I, I can't buy, we're spending too much, but we can't spend it if you don't have.
So. I agree, agreed, Mayor, I, I think that, I'm just challenging us to, every, every ordinance we pass, every uh, development that we approve, you know, we should be thinking about these, these costs, uh, it costs money to enforce an ordinance. It costs money to come up with an ordinance, it costs a hundred and some odd thousand dollars just to study our parks, we're gonna say, I mean, this is money we don't have to spend, I'm challenging us to every time what, we get another proposal to go out and study something, I mean, does it really take a hundred and forty thousand dollars to, to, to decide that our parks aren't being maintained as well as they should be?
Work for P and L, I imagine you probably understand.
I just, I, I can't afford myself, I'm sorry. So let's, let's just try to, let's just try to cut back, this is an opportunity for me to challenge ourselves to think about the cost every time we make a decision, um, and not just say, this is what we want, and this is what we should have. This is the kind of painful discussion I don't really wanna have to have as many, and more, no more than you all do uh, in either now or in the future, so I just wanna throw that out there, it's the only, it's, it's in a appropriate time, this is a workshop, and I just wanna make sure that opinion is clear. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a, uh, a one or two questions I'll ask first, then I'll make some general comments on, on my thoughts similar to what Councilmember Smart has just on. Um, Chief Gregor, uh, since cannabis was brought up as a possible revenue source, can you give me some insight with regard to uh, criminal activity, unlawful activity, or, or other types of law enforcement concerns associated with Nirvana that you are either aware of or have knowledge of?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, so I was asked by the mayor to uh, put a report together in reference the impact that Nirvana cannabis located at forty-nine fifty Arena Road has had on public safety. I asked my team to run some calls for service at this location for the last two years. Um, regarding the jurisdiction, regardless of jurisdiction that responded. Um, the dates I'm referencing is January first of two thousand twenty-one to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Total calls for service during that timeframe was sixty-five. Sixty-five calls for service. Forty-six of these were broken down for me in little categories of the incidents and the types, I'll give you just a couple of them. So, cause obviously, you're gonna wanna know about the crimes, you know. Um, thefts, three, two in two years. Two of them enriched were product from the store. One was money that was left at the ATM that somebody ran their money and just left it, the thing, and somebody else took it, so that was thefts.
But Chief, no armed robberies, correct?
Negative, but, uh, yes, sir, and that's, and that's the reason why I'm kinda giving you the highlights here, sir, cause I want to understand that, from my perspective, disturbances. Four, what are these disturbances? Well, I think three or, two or the three of them was, somebody had left a minor in the car, they called the police, it became a disturbance when the people walked out of the store, I think, and um, I didn't go into arrest and all this stuff. Welfare checks, majority again, minors in the car at, in the parking lot. Reck- reckless traffic complaints. Um, one domestic disturbance that was a disturbance that was because a, a minor was left in the car. Six accidents, the majority of which were parking lot accidents, so backing to each other on private property, which would make it non-reportable for law enforcement, law enforcement got called. Um, assaults, one, and it started in Kennewick and came out to the shop, so it occurred in Kennewick. And the whole party ended up at the shop, and that's where they were contacting. Um, and those are, those are the, the major ones that I have, no armed robberies, um. They had one threat too, um, and I don't recall from my head which, what that was, but that was, that was it, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief, for that information. Um, you know, I think back on my history, and I think why cities were formed in the first place as civilization, civilization developed, and one of the uh, key uh, reasons was for safety. Safety within the tribe, within the community, within the group that had bonded together to try to exist. So when I look at the core responsibilities of our city, safety is number one. As I see it, we have to protect our citizens. When I look at our other core responsibilities, we need water. Everyone's gotta have water, clean drinking water and so forth. Uh, then we've gotta be able to get rid of waste, we need sewer, we need roads to get around. As I look through today's, or this year's budget and next year's budget, what I'm seeing for deferred um, acquisitions, purchases, funding, we all deal with those four issues. With the exception perhaps of parks, parks are a luxury, okay, I agree with that. But our city prides itself on parks. So we do have to make a decision, are we gonna fund parks, or are we gonna let them go? Sell off the land or do whatever. I don't think that our citizens would wanna see us get rid of the parks. So I put that as another essential service that we have to offer. So I was thumbing through this deferred budget requests, and if I put in safety, roads, sewer, parks, there's nothing on that list, doesn't fit in those categories. So we're a growing city, I think in um, when I first came here in two thousand nine, we're probably about eleven thousand residents. Okay, and we're now up to seventeen-six, I think is somewhere around the recent number, so we are growing. Growing is going to require roads, it's gonna require sewer, it's gonna require water, it's gonna require all those attributes. And we cannot expand those services without making hard decisions. Our job is not to decide today whether to cut two dollars or ten dollars. I think our job, council members, is to plan for the future. That is our responsibility. If we're gonna leave a legacy, we're gonna leave a positive legacy, it's a legacy that really focuses on driving West Richland to be the best that it can be. We have the highest per capita income within the tri-cities from the figures that I looked at, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, if you have other knowledge. But I think our per capita income is the highest of the tri-cities, or the four cities. So can we afford these? I don't know, we have to make those decisions, we have to look at everything. But what I do know is this, if we don't plan for the future, if we don't start making some decisions now to be able to maintain the roads, to be able to maintain the parks, to be able to provide that public safe, safety and to haul away all the waste, we are not gonna have a city that people wanna live in. They will migrate from our city instead of coming to our city. So I asked my council members, yes, what we're doing today is important. But what we do, the decisions that we make that will impact things five or ten years from now, or even more. So please keep that in mind, I will yield the floor at this point. But uh, perhaps a second time around, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you what my thoughts are as to how we should prioritize looking at these.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for your comments, appreciate it, uh, Councilmember Haves.
Oops, there, right, um. I, I look at this, I think, um, a lot different, um. I, I hear everybody, um, I don't believe it's a spending problem, it's growth issues that that we've put in place, we're moving forward, we're growing. Um, I just don't see, I would challenge everybody to have an open mind on the options we have for us to build that revenue that the city needs. Cannabis, everybody calls it the, whatever in the room, they have been, I mean, um, you look around and we, when you um, listen to the chief and, and what's going on with, um, you know, with cannabis, it's, cannabis is right, you're gonna take alcohol away. Why not, why don't we look and open our minds to all the possibilities we could have to where we wouldn't have issues with not being able to meet all of the needs that we really look into that, I mean, if you've got it, it's coming into Pasco, it's in Kennewick. Um, and it's amazing how much the cannabis stores give back to the communities. And it isn't necessarily bringing in more crime or anything like that. We gotta be open to where, what's, where are we headed? We gotta open up our thoughts and not be closed to some ideas that could really make a difference with our budget. And so I just challenge everybody to open your minds and think of a positive. What can we do? What can we bring in? What can we create? That will help us in this dilemma, cause the dilemma's not gonna change, there's still gonna be the needs for the roads and the parks and the police and everything, so I challenge everybody to open your minds and think in a little bit different direction, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Bloom, sir.
Ask me the question of deficits and budgets and wants and needs going. I've been chasing the budget West Richland since two thousand and four. And I remember we couldn't afford to replace the sign it was twenty thousand dollars, that was too much. Uh, the police, we, uh, we cut the uh, air program out of the police, that was fourteen thousand dollars. This is the, the level of cuts that was going on back. Um, but, you know, the, the four million dollar number is two-year number, right, so we're talking two million a year. And it's my memory serves, we, we were easily uh, you know, going back two thousand four is probably two hundred thousand. I should, so, and we can do that proportional to budget, it's not that much. You know, we'll always have needs slash wants, whatever we want, again. There, it's, you know, I'm not quite sure what the current, uh, what's the ratio of four thousand to our, what, what's our current two-year budget number overall?
Uh, for general fund, it was just over twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million, so we're talking, that, that's a two-year, so we're talking about maybe it, it's it's, it's, it's in there, um, so I, I, I don't believe we have a spending problem. But we do have a, you know, as the the effects of the, the levy shrinking, it's, it is a major problem. Uh, when we did the library fund lift, what do we take the levy up? What do we take the levy up? Was it one, one nine?
I think it was a dollar ninety. That, that sounds familiar.
We, we opted, we wouldn't take it all the way up. So, so we went from a dollar ninety to a dollar thirty-three. And everybody complains that, oh, they increase our, our assessment here or. They assess the house value that much higher. Well, you know who benefits from that? It's a new construction. This is new construction now gets taxed at one thirty-three. And yeah, my house. Twenty years old, it's probably assessed a lot higher. It's gone up in assessment probably. Three times really well in the last twenty years. But. You know, property taxes haven't gone up. So I, I do believe. You know, as far as car tabs, absolutely. The road maintenance is currently being funded out of gas tax, which is shrinking because people are going to. Et cetera, et cetera. We can sell that easily. I'd really send that to anybody. And actually I proposed at the transportation. Uh, one of the transportation, uh, meetings I went to, I proposed, I got up there, I said. Why aren't you clearly saying you don't have any transportation tax? Why don't you have a nationwide one dollar cap? It would solve most of the problems. And it's not that big a cost. But. You know, I think the aspects of. Yeah, well, let's, let's do cannabis. I, I think that's something. We would, if we wanted to think about that, let's put it to a level. Simple as that. It's not something that costs. I don't think it's a values in the city. You know, personally, I don't think people would want. Just out of, and I don't see it as a huge income. But it isn't worth it to, to. But I do see the car tab. I think that's something we should look for and raising the levy. The question goes down to is. Do we dedicate some of it to parks and to, to the, or do we? I mean, it gets to be an accounting nightmare for Eric. So, uh, I don't think we should separate it as a parks issue. I think it's just simply a levy live. Lift and let's keep parks in the general fund and let's start funding the streets. Let's make two bits.
Thank you. Councilmember Leta Ram.
Thank you. I. Hearing what folks have been saying, I, I am agreeing with a significant portion of what folks are saying. Um, briefly to touch on parks, I would go even further to say that parks. Are a way that affects the health. Of the city, uh, and the safety, because a lot of times. It might end up being youth that might start doing crime if they're in a park playing games. Whatever, they're not doing crime, but also mental health in general. When you have a good, healthy populace, it is much better overall for the city. So I do think that parks are of value. Absolutely, they're a necessity, in my opinion. Um, when it comes to what I've heard some folks saying. Where it seems to be that the. Newer buildings, the newer. The newer areas that are being built up tend to benefit. I absolutely one hundred percent agree. And a lot of times what happens is there are folks that are living here. For decades that are paying in their taxes. And unfortunately, since they're not living in the newer areas, they're not getting newer roads, they're not getting newer pipes. And because we're having to continually limit and pull back and not give Roscoe and not give Eric. And not give the chief the money that they're needing. These older, more established neighborhoods are suffering. But yet the newer neighborhoods are benefiting. So I want to make sure that we can benefit all of our community. By making sure that the newer. Building, the newer areas are paying. Fairly. For what the people that have lived here for a while are continuing to pay into. That we are making sure that they are paying for themselves, whether that comes to them paying for. The maintenance for their own roads for a certain period of time. I'm not sure what the answer is for that. That sounds fairly reasonable, I would think. But I think that in the end, I want to make sure that we're looking at. All of this as. These are not us just saying. Gimme, 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 we want more. This is. These are the things that we need to survive as a city and honestly. Yes, we may be living beyond our means, but it's not because we're being opulent. It's because we've just become so massive. And we have things that in the past. Should have been fixed prior, but because of code and, and whatnot, we weren't able to. So we've got to be able to fix the damage that we can. We've got to be able to. Build up the things that we need to build up to at least make it. Able to continue. So that eventually we can get to the point where we can say now. We can live within our means. And. If we want to have the extras, the opulences. But I think that right now, even just looking at the money, for the numbers that were given in here. I was looking at. Most, we would barely get over eight point five million, just from the numbers that were put in here. And these are using previous years, using the maximum amounts. Which we wouldn't be able to anyway, and that still isn't going to be able to cover what we need because we've got at least ten million and each year it adds up. At least another million worth of deferred in the meantime. So I, I think. In all honesty. And, and even the money that goes into paying the staff to look into these things is money that's necessary. And we think, oh, well, it's just another plan. It's just another thing we have to pay money into. We have to. We have to put money into this. We have to put money into the staff. We have to do that. That's what I've got.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fettow.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, fellow council staff, I apologize, my turn is, I had a. Uh, I don't have a medical situation I do attend to. But I would say, you know, what the city is going through, in my experience, is very similar to the lifespan of a business. You have a startup, you have the growth plan, you mature. And then if all things, uh, work out for you. You are then either into, uh, transition to the next owner or you close out and retire. How those businesses get through that growth phase is by proper planning. In order to get through, I've seen many businesses grow themselves out of business because they didn't plan for. Future expenses as they grew. For example, on the business side. Um, additional L and I taxes as your employees grow from, from five to ten to fifteen to twenty to fifty. Grow yourself right on business. And that's kind of where we're at. If we don't start making some decisions for the future of the city. As the mayor Portem said, we're going to become the place where people want to move out of. Rather than the desired city of a quad cities to move into. Um, I thank the staff for, I'm sorry I missed the presentation, but. Um, there's some great information in here. I know we, you know, focused really on one or two things prior to this meeting. There's some great information here that I didn't think about. And, and just the, uh, Councilmember Bloom's point, I think. There needs to be, instead of a simple lid and it all go into the general fund, I think we need to earmark specific funds for specific tasks or. What's going to happen is we, we put the money in there for streets and then something comes up and that money gets deferred, diverted someplace else. I think we start looking at these things. I think there's got to be some restricted funds that are to our streets. Funds that come in that are restricted to our parks. Uh, to infrastructure. Uh, again, if it all plums into one. One account, I can see us something coming up. And then Roscoe, sorry, we can't do that because. This just happened and now we have to divert these funds over here and solve this crisis. So. That's kind of all because I, I'm scared. And sorry, I missed the, the presentation of this, but. Uh, thank you guys. Thank you, staff. Whoever was responsible for putting this together. I think it was a great job. A lot of stuff for us to think about, but we definitely need to make decisions for the future. Of the city and, and not just in our hands and let business go as usual. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll make comment to Councilmember Fettow's, uh. Point as far as the levy lid, if, uh, if council chooses to go that way. Uh, it would be advised from the staff side of things to dedicate. Funding for that, you're more likely to get the buy-in of the citizenry as opposed to just an open check. That's something that I do agree with. Councilmember Smart.
Yes, thanks, sir. Um. Yeah, I really, I, I like the comments I've just heard. Um. I just want to clarify, you know, spending problem doesn't mean it's what we've already spent. It's, I'm, I'm trying to say, I think, what the other council members have mentioned here is that. We're, we're lining ourselves up for spending problems. And to be specific. You know, we, we have requirements in our code for certain amounts of, uh, land to be dedicated to parks. And then we expect through our current situation, our current ordinances for if a park is chosen, uh, in a development plan. You know, it gets developed and then we inherit it and then we get to maintain it. And we've had conversation about the level of park service. Um, and we talked about, you know, how, how many acres per. Per how rooftop or whatever it was, uh, should be required. Look, maybe, maybe we need to amend that. Maybe there needs to be a reserved parcel of land. You know, maybe it's a three acre park, but we only, uh, require one acre to be developed at this point. And we, we reserve. The other two acres when we can afford it, when we have sales tax to, to be able to afford it. I'm not making a specific suggestion. I'm just saying that this is the type of. Of creative thinking that's outside of what we've done in the past. That may allow us to get through this valley of death in our growth spurt here, right? Where we're. We're taking on liabilities. We're not really sure we're going to be able to fund or not. Um, similarly with, with roads and developments. And I, I think I, uh. Councilmember Moran say something about, you know, new, new citizens, new, new rooftops should. Should, we should find a way that they, or we should make sure that they're. Required to maintain the roads as well as, uh, pay for them initially, the ones that they use that are in front of their homes. I know that if I. If I get an LID in my neighborhood and pave my road as a private road. You know, uh, the city. Uh, may or may not inherit that road. If they don't, then, then I as a citizen and, and, and responsible can maintain that road. Somehow in the city, we, we feel that. We can just take on all these roads without individual contributions. I. I know there's complications. I don't want, you know, one mile of road to be perfect and brand new every two years and another mile of road to be filled with potholes. I, I, I get that. But. But I, I'd love to see proposals come that might. Give us options here, uh, to, to, to traverse this. This period of time where we have, you know, funding needs and don't have the population or the tax base to, to really to do this. So. But that's just my thoughts. I, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to, uh, you know. Impact or, or, um. Change our growth rate. I think it's great. That's just that. I think we need to do it intelligently. This, this media, this type of workshop is fantastic. We, we should probably do this again. Um, and, and I think maybe we will. Uh, to specifically comment. Because the hour is getting late. The revenue options that I would entertain. I would, uh, my, my top three, if I had to choose. Um, would be the, uh, transportation benefit district of some sort, whether it's car tabs or, or, um. Some other way to, uh, benefit transportation. I do agree with Councilmember Brinks, uh. Prioritization of what a city should be providing. That was excellent. And I mean, our police is, is very important. Um, I trust that our chief. Sadly just stepped out. I wanted to say, I'm sure that he's efficiently. Operating that, that department and I'm, I'm confident in that and I appreciate that. But we're going to have to really maintain that, right? So we need to keep that in mind. But yeah, transportation and roads, important, obviously. Uh, utility taxes are already really high. I would say for this city because that's really our, one of our. Third of our income. So I hate to say it, but given the choices that we have here. I would, I would list that as number two personally. And, uh, and number three, I suppose if I really had to go that far. I might look at the property tax, but, um. I'm, I would say that I'm in the negative on the cannabis and gambling and also Metropolitan Park District. In those order. So I just want to make those comments. Uh, I would, I would absolutely not want cannabis. I, I don't want gambling and, uh, the Metropolitan Park District, I would not be in favor of. Oh, and number two for positives, uh, would be the Transportation Benefit District. Uh, the. Uh, utility tax and then property tax. So I, I hate to have to engage in any of those, but if we had to, that would be my. My order, just for, just for all to pick up all of your information. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor Proten, right?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Smart, for articulating, you know, your thoughts on, on what we should pursue further. Um, I'll just make one comment and then I'll offer my thoughts on the top three as well. And, uh, perhaps my fellow council members would like to do that so we can give some direction, uh, to the mayor and his staff. But, um, you know, it's kind of, you know, as I was thinking through this, I see there are like three or four Ps that stand out. For priorities. Um, you know, of course, or, or ones that always bring out the public. I kind of mentioned them before in last council meeting. With Councilmember Bloom counted on, but pyrotechnics, fireworks, uh, pot, parks. And I guess poultry also brings out people too. So there might be four peas here. So. Um, but anyway, if I were to look at the priorities. Um, that I would request, uh, councils, uh, excuse me, that I would request the mayor and his staff to pursue. Um, I'm going to start off with cannabis. Not that I want to pursue that, but I think with a survey coming up. We have an opportunity to perhaps survey our citizens as to their thoughts on cannabis. So I put that out just as a general discussion. I know we're going to have a workshop next week on cannabis, but. It is one of those highly charged things. Um, you know, West Richland citizens buy at Nirvana. I know that. I know several people that go there, but you know, the question is, do we want it within our jurisdiction? So one of the things I might suggest for the mayor and his staff to consider. Is maybe incorporating that as part of the survey to get some general feedback from the citizens. As to how they feel, but. As far as, um, my priorities. I agree, we should seriously consider a, a transportation benefit district. I think that, uh, property tax levy lid lift also needs to be considered. I'm not necessarily in favor of utility tax because I see that as dwindling over the long term. Although we can set the tax rates at any level. I'm just not as comfortable with that. And I think the revenue generated is not as high, but. I would be in favor of looking further into a Metropolitan Park District. If we value our parks. And that has the potential to generate one point six million dollars according to some of the estimates. I think we need to at least consider. So those are my top three, transportation, property and the Metropolitan Park District. So, um, if you'd like, um, Mr. Mayor, I can. Just ask my fellow council members just what they think. Start down the line. Well, she want to take remainings.
I can just go ahead and run it from here. I, that's fine.
Our council member Stoker.
Okay, that's why I put my card up. I'll take your challenge. So, um, and, and just to preface, uh. I, I would agree with the need to include the cannabis as part of the, the, um. Survey, so I mean, we might as well know what everybody thinks. I'm certainly all for that. But to get to, right to the business, for me, first, number one would be levy, I think that would be. Most essential, I could also. I, I, I think I'd be happy to put my name on the line and do a car test for the bucks. And then for me, the municipal park district, again, if they. Um, if they want it, they want parks, they're better supported. So, um. I think levy lid lift and municipal parks district have the most bang for the buck. And we need to get the citizens to buy into that and make that.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Bloom?
I think I've already sort of stated, um.
Let you redo it for us so I can get all my notes correct.
Cars, number one, levy lid lift. That's it. I. I don't see it. To me, uh, uh. Park district is akin to the lobby.
To me, uh, uh, the park district is akin to the levy lift.
Throw the cards down with two. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Councilmember Fettow. Yeah, that's fine. We'll just go, uh, Councilmember Rand.
So I would definitely say that transportation benefit district would be number one for me. Uh, I hate to have property tax in there as a number two, but I, if forced, I would have to say property tax, the levy lid lift would be number two. And with Metropolitan Park District, number three, I would say that, uh, I also agree with the cannabis going on to the survey. I think that, um, it is definitely something that could be beneficial. And if I remember correctly, it is restricted to public safety, correct? It is not restricted to public safety. Okay, so a portion of it is, which actually leads me to just a very quick question, if I may, just very quick to the chief. Chief, I'm just wondering, in your opinion, if we were to have something like this and change the code, how do you feel that would affect our police force if we were to end up having more than just Nirvana close to us, but also maybe have another next to or within West Richland?
I think the only thing I can make an assumption of is the report I gave tonight was statistics for the last two years of the shops currently at the edge of our city. And that's, that's, that would be my answer to that. I, you know, I wish I could look at the crystal ball and give you the future stuff, but, um, I think that tells the tale of what I reported tonight. So.
Sure. No, I, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to know if it was more of a vehement, it's sort of a, we just can't have that sort of a thing here. Or if it was a, well, we haven't seen that much of an issue with it per se right now.
Yeah, I, I don't give opinions on that. I'm, I'm a neutral person as a chief of police and that's decisions you guys make.
But no, I was just talking about public safety, just in public safety. So, yeah, I would say, again, transportation, one, property tax, two, metropolitan, three, and then the cannabis on the survey.
And ju- just for your clarification, the state shared revenue is designated for public safety and sales tax is general fund money. And, uh, you ready? I don't know, you, you, you went on a turn there. Okay, Councilmember Fettow, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So, um, I've got two one As because they don't, one doesn't solve. Transportation and Metropolitan Park, I think are my two number ones. Because you need both of them if you're going to do something. I really against and seeing everybody with the property tax and how they've gone up with the, with assessed values. That's my last one, uh, of my three, just. I, again, I just don't like the, uh, that the voters don't have the right to tell us where this money, or knowing where this money is going and with what's coming up in the city. I think we need to have some designated funds that are restricted. Um, I, I too want to see the cannabis on the, uh, survey. Um, I think it was John said, name was Ken, about the, the benefit outweighing the political, um, repercussions. I think it was what, I can't remember exactly where you said, John, but, um, the, the benefits from cannabis definitely don't outweigh the, the political side of it. But, um, if the citizens are for it, I'm for it. Um, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not really going to take a vote on it until we hear what the citizens are into, but, um, if they want it or not. Um, and then if it does go that way, then we want to make sure we designate the location for that thing to not impact residential. Put it in the middle of light industrial somewhere on the edges. But anyway, um, I see transportation, Metropolitan Park, and as a last resort, property taxes.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Hayes.
Um, okay. Um, I would say the transportation benefit, um, district would be number one. And, um, then the Metropolitan Park, number two. Um, and then the property tax, um, levy lift would be number three. And then I think it's a great idea to have it, the cannabis part of the survey. And since we're doing cannabis, look, why not plan for the future? Why don't we put the gambling on, so we know if we're sending this survey out, let's just, everybody's view. Up and get go. And, um, because I, I think we need to, what's coming down. And, um, and it could help the city a lot. Thank you.
Okay, but I'm putting roosters on it now.
Workless. Yeah, and Councilmember Hayes makes a good point in regards to the, the gambling side. I think you got, uh, right next to the, the public bowling alley in Richland on Welshen Way is a casino that has no big lit signs that are flashing, drawing people in, dragging them in the door. Uh, it creates a revenue, quite a large revenue stream for the city. Uh, and it's not obnoxious and it's right next to, to schools, you know? So if it is zoned in properly, conditionally used, however you want to do it with, you know, with restrictions, it's, you know, it's not necessarily an ISO. Not like driving to some of these little towns where you got the casino sign blaring in the face, you know? So, you know, it's, uh, I want to, I want to ask council of that question. I mean, yeah. Yeah, we are having a, we're having a workshop, uh, and, uh, the, the individual that, uh, we're, we're talking with for our survey is going to make a presentation, uh, for you, and there will also be a Q and A opportunity. Uh, this individual is very, very knowledgeable. And I think we need to really pay attention to his recommendations and, and, but also for him to understand some of our challenges as well. We'll have an internal discussion with the staff, although we kind of vet that out before we have our call decisions.
Councilmember Rand.
Thank you. Something that I, I'm not certain was included in this, and I'm not sure if that's something that would also, I, I would think that it would be an option also, is a thing that I had heard a while back and, um, the sin tax, you know, we're talking about cannabis and gambling. So I'm wondering, does that also include something where the city could put its own just a little bit more tax specifically on these items?
From the, from the cannabis side of things, the state of Washington does not allow cities to put any app, any other restrictions or, uh, burden on the, uh, on cannabis specifically. So the sin tax is not allowable by, uh, state law. Uh, I'm not, and I'm sure that, that, I'm not positive, but I'd then we'd have to look into on the, on the gambling side of things. But I think the way that you look at the way that the state structures stuff, they want to make sure that you don't push anybody's button, uh, for a particular revenue source that is unjustified or in their mind, in their eyes. Statewide, same, same play for everybody else. If I may, gambling, I don't know about cannabis. I do know that's not allowed, but.
I was going to say syntax to me is more broad. I mean, it could be on, there's instances on the west side where they've taxed soda drinks.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's very broad and, and those have never worked because especially where we've got Richland, Kennewick and Pasco nearby with all the bigger shopping centers and all that, we would never get anything on this.
Uh, and, and that was one of the conversations we were having, we were going through things. Well, Seattle can, can tax a, a Pepsi, but you can't, you can't tax a, a joint, you know? That's just.
Well, I remember reading an article where.
How do you make it right, you know?
I remembered reading an article where they put in the soda tax.
Yeah.
And the pizza joint started losing money and the convenience store across the street that wasn't under their jurisdiction started raking it in because they weren't buying their soda at the pizza joint. They would go across the street to get their drinks.
Well, when you're all done banning council members, you go work on, if you go run for, uh, House or Senate, right? Change, the change is the thing. Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yeah, so I, I don't have a problem with the survey. I think it'll be interesting. Um, and I think the more topics that we can suggest that are put on it, the better because it costs us money to do the survey out there. Um, I, one of our other council members here maybe was, uh, Richard or somebody made a comment earlier that, that something like, uh, changing the ordinance for cannabis or even gambling or, um, anything of that nature. Although we may have a survey and it may give us an indication one way or the other. I think it's extraordinarily important that that type of, uh, change in our city's, uh, demeanor is put to, to a vote of the citizens. I, I don't think you can rely on a survey. I think it'd be interesting to inform us, but without a vote, you don't really have a vote. So, um, that's, that's really important, I think. And I think that if we as a council were to take a survey, which is some, you know, envelope that half the people that get it are just going to throw it out, hate to be, uh, a, a, a negative there, but that's just a fact. Um, that's not really giving you necessarily a, a true outlook on your citizenry. So, um, it may be interesting. I'd be, I'm leery of the cost and what we're going to do with results.
I'm going to stop you right there, not, not, that, excuse me, but this is not an agenda item as far as the survey. This is, you just asked that we would put particular things on surveys, so let's not continue to talk survey on this agenda.
That's fine. I just, that's, we were just on the topic of cannabis, but that's good. I'm good with that and talk about more later. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, we will. Thank you. Councilmember Bloom?
Well, I, I oppose the cannabis being on the survey because of, of my fears of, of the story. We, we have, you know, so it's just.
And, and as I said, we'll, uh, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. That's another, that's another workshop that's for next week. And, uh, I do thank council for everything that they've, uh, had good discussion. Uh, staff, thank you for, uh, for the conversation that, uh, that you've brought forth and the information, a lot of hard work. Um, and so we've got our marching orders to go take a look and do some more work and bring back, uh, options, ideas and for further discussion. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting at six forty-two. Thank you, council.